Okay, welcome everyone. This is the annual reorg meeting, which however, I know Ms. Farmararo gets to go first. However, it is Dr. Benante's first board meeting, so with that, I'd like to welcome you.
Thank you.
As I've said before, it feels like you've been here forever already. We've had several meetings and I just want to officially welcome you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Now, Ms. Farmararo.
Welcome to the Haldane Reorganization Meeting. Please join me and rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
[inaudible]
Oh.
Hi, there it is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Trustee Clements?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Here.
Trustee Hammond?
Here.
Trustee Hedlund?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Okay. Okay, this time I'd like to take the oath of office from newly-elected trustee Hedlund and re-elected trustee Parr. And you can, which one of you wants to go first?
I'm standing here.
Okay.
Yes.
You can, yeah. Okay. Okay, just read this.
Okay. I, John H. Hedlund, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee, Haldane Board of Education, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Please say it.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I've got a trick pen. Thanks. Okay. Margaret? Okay. I've got it. Thank you.
I, Margaret Parr, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Haldane Board of Education, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Okay, next. Dr. Benante? Actually, I'm not. There you go.
Thank you, Julia. Where am I? All right. I, Philip Benante, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the superintendent of schools of the Haldane Central School District, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want a different pen?
No.
Okay.
It's as long as any pen.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Julia, will you tell what that book is? I love that, the story of that book.
This is the Oath of Office book. It has been with the district for a very long time. In fact, some of the earlier signatures in here are of Mabel Merritt, who this building is named after, a clerk from a long, long time ago. And it was lost for a little while, but I found it again, so I'm reusing it as a good record of all of our Oaths of Office. Okay, the next thing is, okay. Oh, at this time, I would like to call for a nomination for president of the Board of Education. Do I have a nomination?
Could I nominate Laura Hammond?
Second.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Peggy.
Peggy, thank you. Are there any other nominations? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I, Jess.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Laura, would you like to take the oath of office?
Well, it was lost, but I'm excited if it were to be on paper, whatever, United States.
Oh, that was the period of the two months.
That was the period of loss. Okay. Here is you. Here's the, thank you.
I, Laura Hammond, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President, Haldane Board of Education, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. And with that, I turn the meeting over to you, Ms. Hammond.
So I call for nomination. Okay, I was here. Excellent. So, I would like to call for a nomination, an election of a vice president.
And I would like to nominate Jen Daly.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to sort of say why, just because I've only been vice president for one year, I feel like it's, I feel, I would feel comfortable, I would prefer to say something. Yeah, it, it has been a real pleasure to be vice president, but I'll be, right now, my projects take me frequently to California. I'll also be probably traveling to Texas quite often for both personal and professional reasons, taking on some projects in Texas. And I want to make sure that I can fulfill my responsibilities of whatever role I have, and I feel in that position, I can fulfill my responsibilities as trustee, best, under those circumstances, so.
It's been a pleasure.
It has.
Been a part of this year.
And I'm still available.
Yes, and very much looking forward to Jen's partnership, as well as the rest of the board, of course.
A couple of years ago.
Yes, I was vice president under Jen last year. Well, the-
Year before last.
Two years. So would you like to take the oath?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And you are-
Where am I? I, Jennifer Daly, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President, Haldane Board of Education, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I read this? I just read the recommended action?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is the appointment of the district clerk, clerk pro tem, district treasurer, deputy treasurer, tax collector, and claims auditor. The recommended action is that the Board of Education appoints the following officers of the Board of Education effective July 2nd, 2018, through to the July 2019 Annual Reorganization Meeting at the stipends noted. That is district clerk, clerk pro tem, district treasurer, deputy treasurer, tax collector, and claims auditor.
I have a motion.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think we got all the official business out of the way, and we'll move into our regular business meeting. At this time, there's several business items. Again, welcome to Dr. Benante, and at this time, you can-
Thank you. Just a few comments this evening. First of all, congratulations to our new trustees and our re-elected trustees. It's good to have you aboard with me and us, and I'd like to also congratulate the incoming officers and the outgoing officers on their service to the Haldane Board of Ed. It is my first day, I've had a great first day, it's been a long first day, board meeting on the first day, but I've really enjoyed getting to know the support staff at the central office. I want to thank Ms. D'Nio for her time today, we spent a lot of time together, just getting, giving me the lay of the land, so it's been a great start, and I look forward to this school year. Just a few items for our board. The next board business meeting will be held on Thursday, August 16th, 2018, and that'll be at four o'clock in the Bannon Music Room. Depending on heat, if we have to, we'll move the meeting up here. And that meeting is prior to our board retreat, which will be that evening from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at Winter Hill. One agenda item that's on for this evening is the adoption of the Haldane school calendar for the 1819 school year, and I just wanted to make one note in the spirit of transparency. So there were a lot of, there was a, I shouldn't say a shift in regulation, but there was a lot of discussion at the state level regarding school calendar to ensure that all of our students were receiving the minimum amount of instructional contact time. And this became a major subject of discussion among the superintendents in the lower Hudson region, also up in the mid-Hudson Valley as well. This calendar, I think Julia Sniffin and I had a chance to go through it, and Laura, a couple of weeks ago, we took our time with this just to make sure that all of our students were receiving the minimum amount of contact time. We exceed that in Haldane. But two items that, or one item that came up for discussion, and I just wanted a little more time to review it. The calendar notes March 20th and May 17th as two-hour delayed start time days for the purpose of professional development. Those will be included, but we are going to take a little more time, I just want a little more time to talk to the administrators in the district about the use of those PD days and whether or not they're essential for our operation next school year. We very well may be changing those to full days for students at the start of the school year. I promise I won't let that linger beyond September, we'll address that right away. But given that it's my first day and some of the administrators are away this week, I just need a little more time to talk to them about the use of that time, how it's been utilized in the past, and whether or not we need the March 20th and May 17th as delayed start days, or whether we can change those to full days for students.
I think there's actually four.
There are four.
You're feeling good about the first two.
We're feeling good about the first two.
Okay, the second two you're not sure.
The second two are, yeah, still being considered, and it's a heads-up to the community that you may see a communication from me at the start of the school year indicating that those days have been changed to full day. I just want to discuss those a little more. I also meet with Ms. McHugh, President of the Haldane Faculty Association, in two weeks, so I want to talk a little more with her about that before I make any decisions.
Okay.
And we had, and I think some of the conversation that we had this year was that we had so many snow days, and we felt that those two at the back end were taking additional classroom time away, and so Dr. Benante is wise in trying to understand those two days on the back end.
Yep. Concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, is there any communication from the public? Nope. Okay, moving on to information reports. Those are there for our review, and we'll approve at the next meeting. Moving on to consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Those are the minutes from the meeting held on June 19th. No discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. These are the reports that were presented at the last June 5th meeting. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I actually do have a question.
Sure.
And can you remind us what happens to the class accounts once a class has left? It feels like that's something we have talked about in the past, and I just thought it would be, it's be helpful to have you, like, so Class of 16 right now, they came pretty close to spending all their money, but they do have a balance of $366. How, what will happen with that money now?
The class, with the advisor, the class officers will meet and decide what to do with the class money. The money belongs to the class. They can, if they wanted to have a picnic, they can divide the money up and go home with an equal portion, or what usually happens is they make some sort of donation, whether it's in sports, or arts, or to the next class, and that's up to the class with their advisor to decide what to do with that.
And when does that usually happen by?
It should happen by the time everyone disperses, because it's kind of hard for everyone to get back together. I don't always know of that, because there's a separate treasurer for the extra classroom activity fund, and I will know when I start getting more of the June reports, and I have a conversation with her.
Because this is the report, I apologize, this is the report, actually, the report I just, is, is, is not the final report. Thank you very much.
Right. Okay, any further discussion, comments? All those in favor? Aye. Consent agenda personnel, I'd like to make a motion to table item number seven.
Second.
Number seven. We're tabling.
Oh, yeah. You submitted a motion, and so I seconded it.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. I thought you meant the second.
No, the second.
Sorry. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, for items one through 14, with the exclusion of seven, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. So, item number 15, under the consent agenda, is the six-period assignments for 2018 and 19, which was on, for discussion. At this time, we can add it to unfinished business, perhaps for the August 16th meeting? Would that be?
That's fine.
Okay. Just so we have more information, I'm sure by that meeting we'll have additional information. Okay. Am I going too fast? Sorry. Are you good? Okay. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. This is the approval of the Haldane Central School District calendar. As many of you remember, we did approve the calendar, but then there were revisions to the hours, and Dr. Bowers at the time had suggested that we should really just wait till the July 2nd meeting. So, nothing significantly changed. At this time, we're going to approve it basically as was presented in May, so.
But that, it's a tiny bit confusing, right? Because one of the things Dr. Benante said a second ago is, we're approving this calendar, but there is a chance-
That the two-hour delays-
That the two-hour delays will be held off. So I just, for folks, not privy to, so, so we're approving the calendar, recognizing that there may be this other change, which is great, just making sure everybody understands.
The two-hour delays in March and May are still on the, right. But other than that, everything else is being, well, may I have a motion to approve the calendar?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Can I ask one more question? Sure.
And maybe this is a question for Dr. Benante. This, the calendar, actually, I know the answer to this. The calendar goes out in the packets.
It does.
It does.
It's also posted on our website.
And so lots of folks, because they're, we've been talking about it, but there's, people definitely get it.
Right, and we want to make sure that our families have time, they know when the first day of school is, they can anticipate the days, especially at the start of the school year, because there are holidays and whatnot that are incorporated in there. So we wanted to make sure we got something out to our families so that they could plan accordingly, obviously with the caveat that two of the days are still up for discussion on an administrative level, and we'll get that information out to them as soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
And technically, the two-hour delays do impact, however, we do provide the childcare, and I would anticipate that we would continue to do that for this year, if those two-hour delays remain.
Yeah, there was no change to how we were planning and coordinating on the days that are going to be scheduled for two-hour delays. So September 24th and October 23rd, we still anticipate a need to have a delayed start on those days, and then we'll still provide and accommodate for families as we have in the past.
Great, because those letters, if we recall, go out in August, so we'll get that out with the packets, so the families can begin to plan, if they want to sign their child up for diet, and additionally for transportation.
Right.
So, okay, great, thank you. Correspondence, the letter from Mr. Thomas Campanile, who is the President of the Haldane Audit Committee. So, and my question was, we had to approve, right?
The, my- I'm just making sure that it's on the consent agenda under personnel, under the annual appointments for Bonadillo.
Is it here? Oh, under annual appointments, maybe.
Right.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find that we did approve them.
Yeah, thank you, number nine.
Nine.
The Bonadillo group is appointed under annual appointments, but since we're going to commence the audit next week, or it's usually a little earlier than this, the engagement letter is approved. If there were any changes, they were very slight changes, and that was based on, on generally accepted accounting principles that the auditor had to put in their engagement letter. Other than that, it's the same audit that they're performing as they did last year, and by approving them, then I will be signing the engagement letter and sending it on, and the audit committee did review it.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, any communication from the public? No. All right, then moving on to new business, CSC CPSA recommendations.
Okay. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, as indicated.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is a approval of a resolution or appointment of, a resolution of appointment of impartial hearing officers. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution, resolved that the Board of Education does hereby delegate to the President and Vice President of the Board authority to appoint impartial hearing officers from the rotational list of impartial hearing officers, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education be notified of any such appointments as soon as practicable after such has been made.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next is approval of Board of Education workshop meeting dates. These are changes to the scheduled dates that were previously approved in the consent agenda above, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following changes to the dates for their meetings as follows. November 20th, 2018 workshop meeting will move to Monday, November 19th, 2018, due to early dismissal for Thanksgiving break. February 19th, 2019 workshop meeting will move to Tuesday, February 26th, due to the mid-winter recess. And the April 16th, 2019 workshop meeting will move to Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, in order to correspond with the Bozies Budget and Trustee election. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, the next is approval of Board of Education workshop meeting dates. These are changes to the scheduled dates that were previously approved in the consent agenda above, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following changes to the dates for their meetings as follows. November 20th, 2018 workshop meeting will move to Monday, November 19th, 2018, due to early dismissal for Thanksgiving break. February 19th, 2019 workshop meeting will move to Tuesday, February 26th, due to the mid-winter recess. And the April 16th, 2019 workshop meeting will move to Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, in order to correspond with the Bozies Budget and Trustee election.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye.
Who's this?
The second.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
May I have a motion? Jen, second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is an approval of a resolution authorizing the continuation of Board of Education policies and bylaws and Board Policy 6110, Code of Ethics for All School Personnel. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution to wit, resolved that the Board of Education of the Haldane Central School District, 15 Craig Side Drive, Cold Spring, New York, hereby authorizes the continuation in force of the Board of Education policies and bylaws adopted and/or amended as of June 30th, 2018, including Board Policy 6110, Code of Ethics for All School Personnel, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education policies and bylaws hereby shall be subject to continuing review and shall be amended as necessary in accordance with procedures as set forth in the bylaws, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I just wanted to note that, and Ms. Farmararo noted that, that we continue to review Board policy, this, we're accepting the current policies, but as you know, we have been under the process of reviewing policy, and we will continue to do that this year. I know you're so looking forward to that process.
Fun stuff, right?
Yeah.
Have there been any fundamental, any changes made to the policies that you reviewed over the last year?
Not significantly. I think we got through two sections, 100s and 200s.
Like a line here, there, add in a acronym for further clarification, it's been minor items thus far. Yeah.
But it really needs to be cleaned up.
And we're working on that.
Yes.
I foresee this being another goal of ours, perhaps, this year.
And when updates are made, you said you got through 100s and 200s. Do you iteratively update the policy and publish it? How's it work?
Well, ideally, that would be the case. I can't speak for sure that it's been updated, because we kind of, we decided that we should kind of come to a halt with that until Dr. Benante joined us, and we could review the process, and we could review the order in which we were going in, because we wanted to get to the policies that particularly pertain to students, instead of going in order. So it was kind of all over the place for the moment, so we decided to put that to a halt, and repick that up, and perhaps have discussion this summer about some of that.
The next step.
The next step, yes. So, I think we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next item is the Haldane Code of Conduct Discussion.
Okay, this is another one that, there have been some changes to the Code of Conduct, as indicated here in executive content. We're not approving anything tonight?
It's just a discussion item.
It's just, just, sure.
It'll be approved at the next, ideally, at the next meeting.
Right. Did you-
So I have a question. I just had trouble, the page numbers listed in executive content for where the changes have been made, at least in my reading of the draft of the Code of Conduct, don't necessarily match where they are. So for example, I found, it says page five, there's been an addition of admission for social interactions and Haldane expectations. I was able to find that, it's on page eight, not on page five.
Got it.
And, but I couldn't find then whatever is supposed to be the addition on page 53, and it seemed like an important addition, so if we can find it, that's great. I mean, I certainly want to be able to approve this at the next meeting, I just needed a little bit more help. I don't know if it's like a Redline copy, or something before the next meeting to help find where those changes are.
Absolutely, we'll make sure that the modification page is updated, so it's accurate, with a draft of the Code of Conduct, so you can cross-reference both without issue. So I'll take a look at that after today, and we'll send an updated copy to the board for review.
That would be great, good, thank you.
That'd be-
Because the changes look like they made sense, I just, I couldn't review them very-
The paginations were off.
The next item is the authorization to renew the Audit Committee charge for 2018-19 and the- and the recommended action is that the Board of Education reauthorizes the Audit Committee and charge as presented for 2018-19.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Any discussions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, the next item is the appointment of Board Member Representatives to the Haldane Audit Committee, 2018-19. I guess this is a discussion, and then we do the resolution?
I think we had discussed the possibility of Margaret taking this on again. I don't know if she would be so grateful, or if-
I'm happy to do it. So last year it was me and Evan, and-
We need to have two.
And we need to have two, and since Evan's gone-
I've done it before. I'll do it. I mean, unless, yes.
Unless John wants to give it a shit.
No, I think John has plenty of things to learn, and I think the Audit Committee is actually really kind of complicated. Even though, even though you have like this amazing leadership, like Anne and Tom and, you know, Roman and Carol, but Tom does an amazing job. It's still, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
I'm happy to do it again.
Okay. Okay, so the recommended action is that the Board of Education appoints Margaret Parr and Peggy Clements to serve on the Haldane Audit Committee for 2018-19.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item is a discussion item for liaison for the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association.
So I think we talk about this almost at every reorg meeting, that the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association would love for one of us to be a liaison to their organization. Being a five-member board, I know it's been difficult in the past.
Well, what we've done in the past, too, is we've nominated our superintendent.
First name, welcome.
To be our liaison, and between the superintendent and the district clerk, we are generally, you know, kept informed of their events and what they're doing, and then we kind of split it up amongst ourselves, really. It's like whoever can go to something goes, but there hasn't been like a targeted board member as like the person. I don't know if we want to keep doing that. I mean, I always feel a little guilty when we have this conversation, because I do feel like that's something I would actually like to do, but it's like they always have these events in like Valhalla. It's like, who can go there? You know, if they had events here, so.
I agree. I think it's been working out, and we don't expect you to.
I would, the hell.
I know, we've been to a couple of different events that they hold, and they're actually very informative, and we're very appreciative of the work that Whipspah does. It's just very difficult, like I said, as a five-member board, to kind of split ourselves in many different directions, but we'd like to continue, or at least I'd like to continue to attend their events, and just not formally be written as liaison.
How do you feel about that, Julia? Do you feel like that kind of-
Well, I think that they reach out to me all the time and ask me, are you going to appoint a member, is your board going to appoint a member as liaison? And they, they really would like a member of the board to be as liaison. I don't know that it means that you have to go to meetings. I mean, I think it's just a matter of, like, they have someone to reach out to if they have something. And in particular, also, the Legislative Advocacy Committee, the person could do the same thing if they, you know, they send advocacy notifications as well that, you know, that the board may be interested in, in reading.
And quite honestly, Lisa has reached out directly regardless.
Yes.
So, and we've been, it just kind of works better for us that way, because we are, again, we're a small board, and it's, I've worked with Lisa the past few months in organizing the past event with, that Peggy and I in May attended, so I think it's just kind of not necessarily writing a name down, but we'll continue to work the way we have done, if that works. So, that's that.
That's for me.
And actually, our neighbor in Garrison, Kathy, she keeps us informed as well, Lilburn.
Does Garrison, Garrison appoint somebody?
Sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't.
It is, it is hard. It's far, everything's like an hour away.
I know. I write that in their comment section, when they survey us. I'm always telling them how great their programs are, but I always write, if you could just have some more, like, on the east side of Putnam County, we'd go more.
And the same thing, actually, we were having this discussion at the NISBA, thank you ceremony that Margaret, Peggy, and I attended last week. We're Section 10, but we attended the Section 9, basically, event, because that was closer for us, rather than traveling to Rye. We traveled to West Point. So for, it's kind of the unique area that we're in as well, that, so.
Right, because if they have things, right, if we were on the eastern part of the county, you could hop on 684 and go down. Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, I'm closer down there, so I don't know how, how many events there are or where they are, but I work in Lake Plains, so it's, sounds like it may be much more convenient. I'm not, however, signing up to be liaison, but I am potentially volunteering to go to events as, as appropriate, so.
Perfect. We'll work it out throughout the year.
Actually, I mean, one of the things, as we said, I mean, and I don't know, I mean, one of the things maybe we might want to do as a, as a board, is make a commitment to try and go to some of the events, especially the ones that bring together board members. Apparently, Julia, you could have gone to the reception. District clerks are invited to the, to the reception we went to at-
For NISBA.
Yeah.
Oh, for NISBA.
The NISBA one. Oh, right, so that's NISBA. But, but anyway, with Whipspah, with the Westchester-Putnam Board, I mean, there are these events that are for like superintendents and trustees, or, and, and, you know, maybe we want to make an effort to go, because it's, it's an opportunity for people to go, to engage in some sort of educative activity together. I mean, we might try to do that.
Yeah, we're not the only school that has this conversation. Apparently, NISBA held their convention in Lake Placid last year, primarily because the school's north, and we often forget Syracuse, Rochester, they had been, all the north country had been having to travel south all the time. So it's just a matter of being able to spread, you know, where they have these conventions and these organizations, and we'll do our best to try to continue to participate, especially the ones that are nearby. It works out great. Okay, moving on, any communication from the public at this time?
This was in the city this year.
Yes, October's gonna be, they told us, so it'd be exciting and convenient, so. Well, the other problem with the Lake Placid was that there, they realized the accommodations, the overnight accommodations were limited, whereas in the city, there's plenty, so that was-
And that's the third week in October, the fourth being-
26th, I believe.
27th.
Yeah. So, all right. Since there's no communication from the public, I'd once again like to thank John officially for joining us. I know you've been to the past couple of meetings, and we've recognized you, but welcome. And Dr. Benante?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all for coming.